Good evening and welcome to Lower Frederick Township Board of Supervisors' General Meeting for May 7th of 2025. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic under which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the board are in attendance and accounted for. All of our staff is in attendance as well. Township meetings are recorded for the purpose of preparing the minutes and the recording is destroyed after the minutes are approved. The meeting will be posted online on the Township YouTube channel. The link can be found on the Board of Supervisors' page on the Township website. It is requested that all persons wishing to speak before the board shall state their name, address, and the subject matter upon which they wish to speak for the record. In the interest of facilitating the business of the board, all persons addressing the board shall be limited to three minutes unless such time is extended by the Chair for good cause. Individuals are requested to remain in their seats and to respect when other persons are speaking. The Board of Supervisors will provide a reasonable opportunity for citizens to comment on any non-agenda items after the agenda items have been addressed but prior to the adjournment of the public meeting. We had an executive session this evening to discuss personnel and receive legal advice First item up on our agenda this evening is a word presentation for Officer Lauer.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak about the actions of Lower Frederick Township Police Officer Christopher Lauer. We live in a world that uses the term hero far too often. A true hero is an individual that performs an act without looking for praise. A hero is an individual who stays calm in the chaos, who can overcome adversity and problems solve when others cannot. Officer Lauer is that individual who would rather do her job and serve the residents of Lower Frederick without praise. However, we are here tonight to recognize her actions. Officer Lauer is a true professional and dedicated public servant. The residents of Lower Frederick Township are fortunate to have Officer Lauer serving them. Chris, if you could come up, please. So this evening, we're presenting Officer Lauer with a lifesaving award and it reads as follows. Lifesaving Award proudly presented to Police Officer Chris Lauer. March 24th, 2025, Lower Frederick Township Police Department responded to cemetery lane for medical assistance call. Officer Lauer immediately responded to this residence and located the patient. Officer Lauer immediately recognized that the patient was suffering from a drug overdose and administered Narcan. Officer Lauer continued lifesaving measures, administering CPR until the arrival of an ambulance. Officer Lauer's decisive response, quick and quick thinking represents the best traditions in law enforcement and the first responder community as a whole. Officer Lauer's actions reflect great credit upon herself and the Lower Frederick Township Police Department, given the 7th day of May, 2025.
Thank you. You're an asset. Thank you so much. Okay, next up on our agenda is a community presentation in the Perk Valley Library Schmexfeld update from Aileen Johnson. Are we on Zoom, Aileen? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry.
We had the first time ever we created an annual report. Sorry. I know, I'm not doing it. I'll start over again.
report for 2024, and it shows things about the library that we found kind of interesting. One of them is our circulation total for the year 2024 went over 100,000 like it did in 2023, but it went over that number and it's over 105,000. And we've been really busy at the library. It's really cool. I have, I was going to announce every other municipality heard coming soon. I am pleased to say last week we had our brand new youth services coordinator hired for our building. It's a new position, full-time. Her focus for the library is children's services. So now I have got somebody who can dedicate their time to children's services. My assistant can focus on adult services. I brought flyers, which one's going to be mostly kid stuff, the other one's adult stuff, and the pink one is what's going through the end of May. So we are very, very busy creating a lot of activities, free things for the patrons. We've got craft programs, movie programs, book discussions. There's going to be some retirement programs for the adults. We've got puppet show, we've got magic show, we've got science. We've got, we're really busy at the library and we're trying to keep all your people busy and we love having everybody there. One of the big things coming up, the library board applied for and received an LSA grant of just under $1 million and we're working, in fact, they were talking today to the architect to figure out what we can do with our building. We need to make this building more accessible to the patrons. It was built in '54, ADA didn't exist, and if you're in our building, you can get in through the ramp, but you come up to doors that are heavy to move, step through them, doors are heavy to move. You get into our aisles, they're a little bit tight. The staff is very willing and always willing to help if anybody needs assistance finding things or getting things from our materials and shelves, but it's not super, super friendly. So we want to be more friendly, more accessible, and they have a lot of ideas and it's going to take a while, but we are definitely working on that, too. Do you guys have any questions for the library? I don't at this time, but it's, that's very good news about your grant. Okay. I'll leave these out front while I leave. Thank you, Aileen. Thanks. Do I need to turn anything off? Next on our agenda are administrative actions for our meeting minutes, Jason. Okay. Did everyone have a chance to go through the meeting minutes?
I have a couple comments, actually.
Okay, Peter, thank you.
Just need to find them. Okay, so for the minutes for January 28th work session regarding the EMC stipend discussion, I'd like to change some language in here. Right now, it indicates that Mr. Roberts kind of said, hey, don't you, don't give me the money, use it for this sort of thing. Not that I ever think this would happen, but if the IRS ever got a hold of this, they would look at and say, yeah, you have control over that income, therefore it is income, you should have paid tax on it. So I'd like to change some of the language that, so instead of eliminate in the second sentence that starts off in lieu of payment, just delete that in the second sentence where it says, Mr. Roberts suggested, I think it should say, Mr. Roberts suggested. And then in the following sentence where it says the request, it should be the suggestion. And then the, the last sentence should, should state the funds to purchase the suggested items, just to try to make it clear that this is not something where he told us to do it and we listened, but rather he made suggestions, recommendations. So no one can say that he kind of had control where this money went.
I concur with those changes. I remember the meeting itself where you had made it very clear how they need to be separated. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
So we should be at least approving December 3rd, 2024, December 17th, excuse me, 2024, and the January 6th, 2025 reorg and holding back on the January 28th work session? With those changes? Okay. All right. So can I get a motion to approve all four of those meeting minutes?
I will so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Yeah.
Chuck Yizer will second.
Supervisor Yizer makes the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So just to recap, wherever it says requested, we substitute in suggested.
Correct.
Right.
Next is our treasurer's report.
Okay, so this is the treasurer's report for April. The completed audit was submitted to DCD. We did receive the LSA grant funds for the fire company truck purchase, which was 400,000. This is a pass-through type of expense for us, and we received a new police vehicle, a 2025 police interceptor through a DCD grant through State Senator Pentagon's office. Regarding the general fund, the net income was 248,708, which is outperforming the budget by 295,000. Revenue were over budget by 39.1%, or 310,727. This is primarily due to the real estate tax, which we received 277,000 more than we budgeted for, so we just basically got that earlier than normal. Also notable, the charges for service are 35, or 45,000 over budget. We've had a lot of the building permits for the Lennar project. Our weakest performer would be the real estate transfer, which is 28,000 under budget. Year-to-date budget progress, we're at 44.3% of our budgeted annual revenue. Expenses were over by 1.8%, or 15,000. The key drivers, planning zoning consultant and public works roads, bridges contractor, and then the ambulance tax and fire tax that we pay out through our real estate tax. We had savings in legal engineering, police and public work wages, and police and public works O and M. Year-to-date budget progress, we're at 31.5% of what we budgeted for this year. General capital fund, net income of 112,117. Were 161,000 over budget because we received the DCD grant for police vehicle and the public works donation earlier this year, and expenses have been for the police vehicle that was picked up, but was also unbudgeted. Sewer fund, we ended the month at 238,400, which is 57,932 under budget. Revenue were at 6.3 or 25,000 under budget. This is primarily to our sewer rent charges, which were running 3.5% or 15,000 under budget, and 11,000 under for our sewer connection tap-in fees. Expenses, we are 17.1 or 32,000 over budget. This is broadly across multiple line items. Our year-to-date progress, we're at 37% of budget revenue and 16.4% of expenses budgeted for 2025. Sewer capital, we've had minimal activity. We've made 1,600 in interest and we've had one release for the Zieglerville Road extension planning that Hydro-Terra performed. Liquid fuels, net income is 128,000, which is exceeding budget by $4,200. Revenue were 1,500 over budget. Expenses has been for road salt and our truck loan payment. Year-to-date, we've received 1.101% of our revenue and we've spent 16.9% of our budgeted expenses. The open space fund, net income was 2,088, exceeding budget by 6,723. Revenue, we've earned 34,246, which is $6,500 over budget. Expenses, we're at 31,366, which is $554 under budget, and that's for EIT Commission, legal review for the 138 Yerga Road Conservation Easement and the county ag contribution for the 8 Sep Road. Available funds are 298,983, which excludes allocations for the federal Highlands Grant for Conservation Easement and Natural Lands Conservation Easement. Year-to-date budget projects for progress at 30% of revenue received and 22.1% of expenses spent for 2025. Then the ARPA COVID Relief Fund, we spent 32,000 this year so far with 1,500 interest earned, and so far we've had projects funded for the Foy Plark Playground repairs, township building generator upgrade, PD renovation project completion, and the Spring Mount sidewalk project. Are there any questions?
I have no questions at this time. Next on our agenda is the payment of bills from March 29th to May 2nd of 2025. We have a couple for the general and the sewer fund, where Supervisor Sax is going to recuse himself, so I'm going to read off the accounts that we can all vote on at this time, and then we'll do those last two separately. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Payment from the general fund in the amount of 644,650. Payment from the general fund capital, 51,721. The sewer fund for 67,923.10. Sewer capital fund, 5,356. Our ARPA COVID Relief Fund for 10,807.50. And the open space fund for 1,078. Can I get a motion? The first one was 644,600. I said that. I did. I apologize. General fund for 644,650.15. Can I get a motion to approve the payment of these bills?
I will so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Bird makes the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
And I will recuse myself for the...
The next two.
Next two.
Okay. So the general fund in the amount of 36,482, and the sewer fund in the amount of 2,800. Can I get a motion to pay these bills?
Chuck Yizer will make that motion.
Supervisor Yizer makes the motion. I will make the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I just say something real quick on the bills just paid? So I know Jason went through it, but the large number of the general fund and the capital was the 400,000 for the fire truck, 73,000 and some change for the tax pass-through to the fire, 29,000 pass-through from the ambulance, and then 50,000, a little change for the police vehicle. So those are huge numbers that we just passed, but they're normal numbers. There's just big checks in this, this month. That's all.
Thank you for that clarification, Supervisor Bird. Okay. Next up on our agenda is our professional and staff reports. We can start with Carol with her engineer's report.
Thank you. So the first two items on my report, of course, are things that appear later on the agenda, so I'll jump over those for now. But some updated information, at the Prestige Builders or Farmview Estates, installation of the water main in Little Road is complete. There are more homes under construction. Much of the interior road has the basin binder course of pavement, and I understand testing of the sanitary sewer main is currently underway. At Melbourne Hill, water main installation in Gravel Pike is complete. Interior site work continues, including installation of gravity sewer and force mains. You may have seen on your way in tonight, the Spring Mount Road sidewalk project is underway. The work has resumed since the brief pause, and the contractor is expected to complete all project work by the end of next week. The chip seal of township roads, the preparatory work, the pavement base repairs were completed on the roads that are to be chip sealed. That chip seal was originally scheduled for Monday of this week, but the weather didn't quite cooperate, so they are rescheduled to the beginning of next week, and that's when we'll see the chip seal work take place. The other items on my report are either nothing has changed since the last report or it's about individual grading permits that we don't normally review at these meetings. I'll be happy to address any questions you have on these matters.
I have no questions. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Carol?
I do. When did you say Little Road is scheduled to be paved? I missed that.
Yeah, I don't have that date, but I can look into that.
Okay. And then if they could do that sooner, then, thank you.
Next up is our solicitors' report.
Nothing.
Township staff reports. Police, Chief Cass.
Thank you. For the month of April, we had 434, 434 calls for service, 35 traffic enforcement details were conducted, 110 traffic stops conducted, 68 traffic citations were issued. Members of the police department understand there's an ongoing concern for the speed throughout the township. With the number of traffic stops that we've conducted and speed, we've been able to limit our crashes significantly. We only had two this past month. The goal that each of us have set at the police department is to have zero crashes for the month and maintain that. Officer Lauer attended police supervisory insert, also known as POSIT through Penn State's Justice and Safety Institute. Officer Narke attended the Kista Model of Crisis Management Workshop. Pennsylvania State Police, Penn State Health Department of Behavioral Health, and Pennsylvania Psychiatric Institute provided this in-depth training. Officer Carmencie is going to be testing for an open position for the Montgomery County SWAT West team. This is the primary SWAT team that would respond to specific high-risk situations in the township. Lower Frederick is an active member of this team, and the specialized training that he will receive will help officers de-escalate situations that maybe, they may be, may be required to respond to. As was mentioned earlier, we have taken delivery of the new police vehicle. Hopefully, we should have it up and service in the next two weeks. We're just waiting to get some of the equipment connected. We are also going to be working in conjunction with Perkin Valley School District utilizing the bus patrol program. This program is the school bus camera system, which will capture any motor vehicle that passes a school bus with a stop sign or stop arm activated. I know this is something that Supervisor Bird had inquired sooner. I know it's active in the school district. We're waiting for some agreements to be signed where we can start working in conjunction with them to issue the citations for the offenses.
So with the camera picks up, will it go straight to you?
So it'll go to us. My understanding, I haven't seen the final, but we'll get the notification. We are able to, it's a cloud-based system. We're able to review it if we approve it, or I'll be the one that will be approving it. Once we see everything with the 360 camera, we approve that, yes, we agree, I agree that it's a violation, then it gets shipped to the school district, the school district then issues the paperwork for it. And they, and they, the school district will handle all court stuff, so it's not going to be taking us off the street.
Okay.
In a matter of testifying at court, the school district will do everything with that. As many of you are aware, we assisted state police with an incident up on Walnut Lane. I cannot discuss the specifics of this incident. However, as we sit here tonight, there's no concern for public safety and the incident has been resolved. We are still engaged in several investigations. A couple of these investigations, we're still working with the federal law enforcement partners. As we work through these investigations, I'll be able to release further things if arrests are made. And just again, remind anyone, anything discussed on social media usually is not true. If you have any concerns, please reach out to us, and any, any concern that you bring to us remains confidential. And if that's all I have, answer any questions anyone may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief Cass? Thank you for that. Next report, Fire Company.
Did you mention the AED that they got done here?
Scott Anxet, Fire Company. For the month of April, we had a total of 23 calls. Out of that, 11 were in Lower Frederick Township. We practiced, had a practice that was field slash woods fires related, just getting ready for this upcoming season. Want to thank the township and local supervisors for helping us acquire the LSA grant. Truck is still going to be the, and probably the end of 2028, like November, December, but it's, at least this will make our life a lot easier, actually, as far as the total cost involved. As far as the local new hydrants, we love it when we get new hydrants that aren't covering the area, especially with like littles up there, both sides of the gravel plate, it makes our life a lot easier. Just for everybody's kind of information, our engine carries 1,500 foot of hose on it, so anytime we have a hydrant, then that makes it that much easier for us to reach out and get to, you know, the houses that are within distance of that. And Little, Little Road is going to help us quite a bit, so we're happy with that. So, and one other thing is, we had our cornhole tournament last week. We got pushed back one week. We had a total of, I think it was 31 participants, actually, and it was a very good turnout for kind of weather that we weren't really sure whether it was going to be good or not, basically. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Real quick, did you want to mention the EAD?
AED, yes.
Yeah, from, from the ambulance.
My apologies.
No, that's okay.
Did everyone get the copy of the letter for the...
Absolutely, yeah.
So just so the public is aware, Plymouth Community Ambulance is the ambulance that serves Lower Frederick, several other. We have a great working relationship with Chief Trudansky. I had asked him about if he could put me in contact with the company contact for the AEDs that they use. He said he would get back to me. Later on in the day, he ended up providing a full, brand-new AED. This AED is compatible with Plymouth's AEDs that they carry on their ambulances, so God forbid if we have to use an AED, they can literally disconnect ours, plug into theirs, and there's no separation in service, emergency service or lifesaving. So I apologize for not mentioning that.
No worries. Thank you so much. Jason, will you be fielding the ambulance? Did they submit one?
Yes. So for the month of April, they had 23 total calls in Lower Frederick with a year-to-date total of 98. Their primary coverage area, they had a total of 90 in April for a year-to-date total of 322, and their mutual aid outside their primary coverage area was 20, they had 23 calls for a year-to-date total of 100.
Okay. Public Works?
All right. So Public Works performed the following work in addition to the routine operations. Actually, this is... They installed new casting and risers on Manhole 424, which is outside. It's just down the road here from the township building. They took advantage of that road being closed. So as you can see by the photos, that was quite a bit of a project. But that was done by our guys with a little bit of help material-wise from G and B, our contractor that's doing the Spring Mountain sidewalk. They cleaned the area behind the salt building, behind the shop, assisted with a pre-bid meeting for our mowing bid, performed ditch cleaning on Girl Off Road, cleaned up dawn trees from windstorm, installed an underdrain pipe in locations on Girl Off Road. Here. Mowed all parks and open space, cleaned and raked the ball fields at Cobal Park, removed old picnic tables and installed new at Cobal Park, started the installation of benches at Cuddy Park, sold a new school bus stop sign, painted speed lines for the police, swept the parking lot at Cobal Park. They had three call-outs for debris on rideways, two alarm calls for sewer plant lift stations. They did 41 PA1 calls, and they had one sewer inspection for UNO resale.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, I did not see a zoning report. Do we have one that you can disseminate?
Yep. All right, so for the month of April, we received 18 building permits, 23 zoning permits, for a total of 41. There were 10 building permits approved and 13 zoning permits approved, for a total of 23. And they had three zoning permit projects completed in the month of April. We did receive two new zoning hearing board applications, which have been tentatively scheduled for June 9, 2025. The previous zoning hearing board that was continued by the applicant for 208 Trunk Road will be scheduled on that same night. Continue to assist code enforcement investigate property concerns violations in assist with applications. We issued the following permits. We had three resale UNOs, three park reservation requests, one occupation permit, 18 burn permits, and we received 42 pumping reports and sent out 224 pumping reminders.
Township Board and Commission reports, the EAC.
The EAC met on April 14. The council discussed the best timelines for EAC recommendations to be presented to the board via Jason. We've worked on items that are not currently before you, but have been referred to as on your radar. We've recently asked Jason to send the two things we've been working on onto you so that as we complete these things, you have more time to review, consider, and decide on their priority level. And we're looking for your feedback to know, when do you want to get things from the EAC?
What have you sent already?
So the weed ordinance and the open burning ordinance, which is probably the EAC's priority for the board because there've been so many more field fires and so forth. If you remember discussing it, the current burning ordinance is not clear. It's not set up well. It doesn't refer to permitting very well. So what we've done is kind of make it clear about when it's safe to burn, the different regulations that the township has, what you can burn. Because previously, there's that you can burn refuse, but if you go all the way down, it really says you can't burn refuse.
So basically, have you already sent that to Jason?
Yes.
Okay, so Jason, you can make sure that we get that. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Diane.
All right. Our Stormwater Committee reported on Perkyomen Watershed's stream cleanup. The EAC volunteered at Route 29 in Swamp Creek. It was really gratifying to be part of that. The EAC is working with the Perkyomen Watershed also to schedule a presentation on building a rain garden in your own backyard. This is likely to be for July. And I would like everybody to check out the EAC's website. If you drop down, you see Lower Frederick Wilds. We now have three examples of rain gardens, meadows, and so forth to give you ideas for what you can do in your own backyard. Birdtown Committee reported during our meeting that there was going to be a bird walk for April 27 at Green Lane Park. Our Perkyomen Pacers arranged that. It was held. It was very successful. It was chilly, but the birders and the birds showed up anyway. We now have recycling containers that have been securely placed by Public Works in Cobal and Cuddy Parks. Residents are using them, and our recycling program has begun. We continued planning on our activities to contribute to the park board for their Spring Fest. We'll have a match the feather to the bird identification game. They won't be real feathers because of the worry about bird flu. It'll be even more colorful, and we'll also have a table for children and parents to make. Bird nest balls of nesting materials to hang in their backyards. This month's Did You Know, we provide two websites. One where you can see the breakdown of energy sources used for electric generation within your zip code. It will show you the percentage of how much is from renewable or other sources. And if that inspires you, the second link is to the PAPUC's Power Switch website. If you want to help shift the balance to renewables use, you can choose a green energy supplier for your electricity. Any questions?
Not a question, but if you'd like any pictures of my rain garden, it's very effective. So if any of you have like a wet area in your yard, a rain garden really does the trick. The water just goes into the rain garden and grows plants.
Absolutely. So just send them to the EAC. We have a lovely meadow that is in your area now on Lower Frederick Wilds and some other things. And it does give instructions to people, kind of like what the process is. So, thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Open Space Committee.
Good evening. The Open Space Committee met on April 9. At the meeting, we conducted a brief review of the state of the Open Space Fund at that time, which Jason provided an update for earlier. Good part of the meeting was dedicated to initial planning for a volunteer day that we're looking to host later in the year, specifically looking at doing some landscape and property maintenance for some of the open space parcels on the Stone Hill Greenway. Were in the initial planning stage for that, and we have conducted some outreach with Natural Lands just to get their insights on how they have organized similar volunteer events. And we'll be looking to communicate with some of the other township committees as that work progresses. So I expect to have more updates on that as planning continues there. We also have put together an informational flyer that we will look to distribute at the township building on primary day on May 20. And the remainder of our meeting on April 9 was devoted to an executive session to discuss certain property matters that we're in the means of considering. The next meeting for the Open Space Committee will be a week from tonight on May 14. And I can look to answer any additional questions or comments that anyone might have.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Planning Commission.
That meeting was canceled for the month of April.
No, as far as the Planning Commission. Yeah, so Jason did mention we had canceled our meeting for April, but we are still pursuing the directive that the Board of Supervisors had given us about prioritizing trail connections and linkages in the village areas of our township. So the board and the members of the Planning Commission all received a document that had been generated in our behalf by the Montgomery County Planning Commission. John Mikolos had brought that to us, and Jason disseminated it. And I guess my request to the Board of Supervisors, since it's in your custody at this point, if you'd have an opportunity to look that through and forward any concerns, comments, support of it to, you know, either Greg Pocus or Jason for our use at our next meeting, that would be much appreciated, and it would help our discussions. So basically, what I'm asking of you is to take a look at that document, which you should have somewhere in your packets or email. And if you have any comments to make, it would expedite our considerations and discussions if you would forward that to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Sorry. Jason, what do you recommend we do with our comments for this document? Want us to send them to you individually? What do you want us to do?
My thought would have been the Planning Commission to discuss. It's going to be in front of the board for you guys' ultimate approval, but if you want to send me comments, just do it individually.
Parking rec.
Okay, I have a tendency to be loud, so I'm not going to stand very close to the mic. Okay, so we met on Monday. Our egg hunt was very successful. It continues to expand, and we keep adding new fun ideas. We can confirm that we did have more cars than last year. So having the extra support from our fire company, Upper Frederick and Lower Southford, was extremely helpful. So thank you to the fire companies that showed up, and then also thank you to you guys for approving the additional support from them. Perkyomen Pacers, ditto to what Diane said. I was literally going to say the same exact thing, but it was a lot of fun. And one addition, we had some a lot of fun comments that came out of the bird walk as well. So I encourage you guys to attend the future one that we're going to have. Our next walk is going to be May 31. It's going to be a Revolutionary War walk at 10:00 a.m. at the Penny Packer Mills. Our guide's going to walk us through the location's role in the Philadelphia campaign during the Revolutionary War, so that's going to be pretty exciting. Book club, Stories in the Park. We did have book club last week. Lower turnout, it was still a lot of fun from the folks that were there. Next one's going to be June 14, and it's going to be at Cuddy Park. The book we're reading is Home is Where the Bodies Are by Geneva Rose. We are partnering with the Perkyomen Library again for Stories in the Park. We're going to be having two events. One is going to be July 3, and then the other is going to be August 14. And they're both going to be at 10:00 a.m. at Cobal Park. The events that we have on the horizon coming up, we have Spring Fest on June 7. We have a lot of organization and activities, and we already have our fingers crossed that we don't get rain like we did last year. So if you could do the same, that would be great. Our first concert's going to be June 26 at Cuddy Park at 7:00 a.m. The band is going to be The Left Edge. In regards to the park signs, we were tasked by the board to provide input on the options of the different park signs. I did get that over to Jason today. He and I did speak, and he confirmed that it's going to be on a future agenda to discuss. Let's see. Grants and donations, we did receive notice that we didn't get the PICO grant, unfortunately, but we're going to continue to look for other grants. As for Cobal Park renovation, we've had 79 respondents. The last time I gave you guys an update, we had 24. We're going to be closing the survey in October, and we're just continuing to encourage community members to take the survey, making sure that if the local businesses, if the sign disappears, we're just making sure to replenish it. And then for our donation letter, we've had good response from that as well. And the park board, to date, we have about 3,300 donated to date, so that's good for the parks. And then finally, we are excited to be on the agenda tonight because we did have a volunteer step up to join the board, and that is the park board report. Any questions?
The PICO grant that you didn't receive, what was that supposed to be used for? I apologize.
That was the Cuddy Park drainage.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any idea why you didn't get the grant? Were there just a lot of applicants, or was it very competitive? Do you have any feedback? It'd be helpful to know.
They had many projects to... That was the impression. It was a pretty brief letter.
Okay. Next up on our agenda for our regular business this evening is the Arcadia Station subdivision project closeout and maintenance period.
Gia, you want to start?
Hi, good evening. Sorry I'm not there in person. I have a scheduling conflict. We're here to hopefully finalize the dedication of Arcadia Station. We've worked with the solicitor. We've delivered our maintenance bond for the public improvements to the township manager. We have come to a dedication agreement where we are agreeing to plant the township trees and the HOA trees that we've discussed with the township solicitor. We're still asking the HOA, and it's just been a matter of timing and getting together whether or not they'd rather have a cash contribution or the trees, but in the agreement, we've agreed to do whatever the HOA elects to do. And that planting will be done by June 1. We've also agreed to walk the site in advance with the township engineer within the next week. So I believe those were the outstanding items that we talked about the last time we were here. If you have any questions or want me to explain anything else, I'm happy to do so. But we're looking to move this into the maintenance period with our obligations as they're set forth in the dedication agreement.
So just to, we had put a dedication agreement before you last, I guess it was last month or maybe the month before even.
Month before, yeah.
Before. So Gia and I have had discussions over it. She's had some changes, which I accepted others, which I didn't, and we worked out our differences. And so we have now, as of today, come to an agreement as to the language of that agreement. It's essentially the one that was given to you two months ago. There's slight tweaks to it as to how the escrow money is being provided to the township, but we're still getting the same amount of escrow money. It also has been tweaked to, you know, in anticipation of a further discussion with the HOA, allowing, you know, basically Metropolitan to either plant the trees or provide the money, whichever the HOA asks for. And then lastly, as was discussed by Gia, Carol is going to go out with a representative of Metropolitan, I think within the next week, to see if there's any trees that were alive last fall but did not make it through the winter. Because once that's agreed to, Metropolitan has agreed to replace those trees also. But, you know, from my standpoint, this is good to go. I believe Jason has updated versions of the agreement that can be approved. I think Gia's going to provide us with a signed copy from Metropolitan. And yeah, I think we're all good to go, and I think Carol agrees with this that we recommend that we move this project, accept dedication, and move it into the maintenance period.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I do have one quick question. Yes. So I believe that there were trees that were supposed to be planted somewhere at Arcadia, and they ended up being planted at Cuddy Park?
Yes.
Do these fall under the maintenance period, or are these kind of?
They do not.
They do not?
The agreement, as I recall, when those were planted, was that the township would be responsible for their ongoing maintenance.
Okay.
Those trees are not included in this agreement.
So it's all on us. Oh, I got it. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, well, not seeing any more questions or comments. The motion put forward is that the Board of Supervisors of Lower Frederick Township approve and accept the dedication. approve and accept the dedication and completion agreement between the township and KTNT-1 LP for the Arcadia Station subdivision, and further authorize the Chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board. Can I get a motion?
In addition, I would add that...
Yes.
The township is accepting dedication of the public improvements being offered to it by Metropolitan, which include Open Space 8, the additional right-of-way along Schwenck and Ziegleville Roads, and am I missing anything, Carol?
I think that's it.
I think that's it. But yeah, we're going to, we need to accept dedication of those items at this time also.
Okay. Motion stands, as I said, as Peter remends. Can I get a motion?
I'll so move.
Supervisor Hexter made the motion. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Supervisor Sax makes the second. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Gia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just...
Good night.
Good night. Just out of interest, how long did it take us to get to this point?
A long time.
Seventeen? When did you remember, Gia? Do you know when they, when they broke ground?
They broke ground, I had just started at Metropolitan in the summer of 2017, and they had purchased the property, so I think by, by 18, certainly, 18 or 19, maybe, 19, we're in the ground, but then D.R. Horton built the homes. It's been a long time.
Yep.
But I appreciate where we are right now, so thank you for everyone's assistance. Good night.
Thank you, have a good night. Next on our agenda this evening is the zoning hearing board application for 222 Overlook Drive and 40 Spring Mount Road.
Okay, so, the application for 222 Overlook Drive, we received that application on April 25th. This is tentatively scheduled for June 9th, 2025. They are requesting the following relief from the Lower Frederick Township ordinance to facilitate construction of a 750-square-foot addition in Las Suite within the township's R2 low-density residential district. I don't know if you want me to just, or to read through those, or... I can show them.
Can you bullet point it? Keep it brief.
Okay, the first one would be 170-27 dot B dash, or dot, point B, point 1. This is conversion for accessory apartments with a minimum required lot area, the lot size requirement of 1.75 times larger than 12,500 would equal 21,875, 21,875 square feet. The lot is only 16,706 and does not meet the minimum requirement. Same section, but except dot, point D, point 1. As far as regarding the accessory apartment, the accessory apartment must have a separate entrance. Access to the apartment cannot be through the existing dwelling. Building addition shall not exceed 100 square feet unless necessary for safety or improved areas. The approved, the proposed addition is 776 square feet. Same section, the proposed apartment is 776 square feet, only 750 squares feet or less is allowed. And this one, next one is 170... And I apologize, I haven't gotten the advertisement yet, so I had to pull it from their application if it's a little confusing.
So, the next issue is, has to do with parking. They need to provide parking for this accessory apartment. They haven't shown it on the plan yet, and I think the assumption is they're asking for a variance because they can't provide the necessary parking. And then, thirdly, they need to prepare a deed restriction. I don't think they're asking for a variance to this, to this ask, this particular requirement, but they do have to prepare a deed restriction, which basically, if you want to have an accessory apartment, you need to have 75% of the minimum lot area for the apartment. So, a house with an accessory apartment, the minimum lot area is 1.75% larger than the minimum lot area for just a house. And in this regard, you're supposed to provide a deed restriction preventing further subdivision that would reduce the lot beneath that 1.75% or 1.75, 1.75 times the minimum lot size for a normal house. Obviously, in this situation, you know, since this house is already in a development, chances of it being subdivided and built upon are pretty minimal, so maybe they're asking for a variant due to that fact, but otherwise, there's really no reason why they would need it. They are also have asked for a special exception, which is not needed here. I don't know why they're asking for a special exception. I can't find any reason why they would want one. I think it's just a mistake on their part. And then lastly, just for a clarification, building additions, they're not supposed to put in an addition for the accessory apartment. It's supposed to be in the existing building. You can add an addition if it's necessary for health and safety. If you prove it's necessary for health and safety, that addition can only be 100 square feet. So, the variance they're asking for is, I think they need a variance, one, because they can't prove this addition is necessary for health and safety, and two, the fact that this addition is then also greater than 100 square feet.
Peter, I remember we had something, I think similar to this, on Mine Hill where they put in an addition for someone's parents.
Yes.
So, what is the difference between that one and this one? Is it not the same?
That one, they were not applying for, they were just asking for an additional dwelling unit. They, they were not applying for an accessory apartment under this particular section of the zoning ordinance. So, yeah, that one, there was issues where they were going to put two dwelling units on the same parcel. You're only allowed to have one principal use on the parcel. Then there was discussions, I think, where they were going to connect the building by a breezeway. That turned the building into a duplex, which was all not allowed within that zoning district. So, it, from a non-zoning perspective, what they're proposing was exactly the same, but from a zoning perspective, they were coming at it from a completely different direction.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
So, this is an R2.
Yes.
And it's currently neighborhood lotting, and they're going to end up with, if they do this, they'll end up with a 10-foot side yard setback, which I guess is consistent with R2. I'm looking at Carol, see whether she knows magically. I think it is, but I'm not sure.
Not offhand, I'll look it up quickly.
Kind of remember it might be. I mean, I guess my general feeling is that I would prefer to be neutral. If anybody's going to have an issue with it, it would be the neighbor who is impacted on that side of the house, and, you know...
The minimum side yard is 10 feet each.
Yeah, that's kind of what I remember, so they're okay there.
And I think it's a huge swath of open space on the side of the house that they want to do that on?
No, they're doing it on the other side.
They're doing that opposite side.
I'm trying to gauge where this is there. Oh, I see, it's on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay. Understood. And this is for an in Las Suite?
Yeah, the, I mean, there's, it's to house an elderly mother to, you know, as I think they said, they want to provide her with her own space and a feeling of independent living, but being under the same roof so that they can keep an eye on her and are available if there's any issues.
Okay. For myself, I think I have no opinion. I'm going to remain neutral. I'll let the zoning hearing board make that decision.
Same.
Okay. Okay, I think we're unanimous in that.
Carol, you good?
Yeah, I'm good with that. It's, I have no...
Yeah.
Okay. Want me to do the next one? All right. Next, we have an application by St. Mary's Church just down the road. They are seeking to put in a electronic display sign. Basically, I, you know, it looks like they're going to take out, currently, they have a sign at the front of a property, at the top it says, you know, St. Mary's Church, and then they have a changeable letter sign where they can manually change, put letter, different letters on to spell out messages. They want to take that portion of the sign out and put, put in an electronic display sign. They are seeking several variances in order to do this, including, you know, right now, our zoning ordinance prohibits electronic display signs that change more than once a minute. They want to change every 30 seconds, so they need a variance. The size of the display area of the sign, the electronic sign area of the entire sign can only take up 50% of the entire sign. What they're proposing takes up more than 50%, so they need a variance to that particular requirement. Thirdly, we require that a monument, monument sign be at least one foot above the ground and no higher than three feet from the ground. It, I think what they're proposing does not meet these requirements, and therefore, they're going to need a variance. And then lastly, we prohibit flashing revolving non-stationary or animated signs, other than barbershop poles, and the church would like to have animations and picture backgrounds, so they're going to need a variance to that particular requirement. Once again, the church asked for a special exception. Once again, I'm not sure why, but that's for the zoning hearing board to work out.
So, I was on Planning Commission when we did the sign ordinance, and the supervisors at the time really didn't want Lower Frederick to start looking like Las Vegas. To be honest with you, I think that's the bottom line. So, that's why, you know, those things are in there, about how often it can change and animation and stuff like that.
I can tell you, I've seen many of these types of ordinances, and these are very normal requirements.
I mean, I don't know how many you drive down 724, but they put a horrendous sign up just west of Phoenixville. It's vertical billboard, which looks like Las Vegas. So, while I'll leave it up to the Board to decide what they want to do, I, if I'm available, I may not be on that day, if it's June the 9th, but I will come as an individual and state my preference, but I, I don't see it as a necessary thing to get across their message if they have all those extra frills, but that's my personal opinion.
I agree with Supervisor Yizer. I guess I'm questioning, it's like they're throwing everything in the kitchen sink in here, they're like not even trying to...
Correct.
Like, work with what, what it is. So, I'm going to have no opinion, or I don't agree, remain neutral at this time, but as Chuck said, I may show up and have an opinion myself. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. They're asking for a lot of changes that are really not at all consistent, and I don't see the hardship. They're supposed to be for hardship. Can we, if we have at least three people on the Board who feel the same way about the 30 seconds versus the minute in our ordinance, and also the animation versus not allowing animation, can we request that condition? That is not, not oppose it, but just...
Right now, you know, Dave Keatley from my office will be at this hearing. David Keatley, he, he's an associate at my office. He is handling the 208 Schwenck Road, Schwenck Road hearing. So, I mean, if, if the Board does not like some of these things that are being requested, it's perfectly appropriate to have, you know, David state the fact that we're opposed to these variances. You know, we could simply just send a letter stating that we're opposed and not have anyone show up, or if you want someone from my office there to say, hey, we don't think these things are appropriate, and we don't think there's any hardship here, we certainly can.
If you're going to have somebody there already, I'm fine with that, what you suggested, having that person advocate for the township, assuming that there's, we have at least three people who are willing.
I don't have an objection to the sign. I have an objection to some of the things they want to do with it.
And, and if you direct us what you object to, you know, if you object to two or three of the variances, we will present that to the zoning hearing board to say, we don't have any issue with the sign, but however, we don't think they deserve, they have a right to the variances that they're requesting. Absolutely, we can do that.
I, I would be, I would, I would consider that, yes.
Okay.
So, we're talking about, we're talking about objecting to, I'm sorry, my, my... We're objecting to the animation portion, which I think is unnecessary, and, and the timing, stick to the timing we have. I mean, if they want to have it a little bit bigger, whatever, that, I don't have an issue with that, but those are the...
What was the dimensional issue? I forget what it was.
The dimensional issue is...
Forty-eight, 48 inches wide, isn't it, the sign?
Yeah.
Thirty-six inches high?
Yes.
And then, where's the, oh, the 59 is the top of the piers.
Yeah, so, the way we measure a sign is the entire thing. So, they're proposing a sign that's going to have, can you have the, you know, I think it's a wooden sign that says St. Peter's at the top, and then they'll have this electronic, or sorry, St. Mary's at the top, yeah.
Name it after yourself there, huh?
There you go. It's the Basilica. We have the Basilica here. We, so, the, what our zoning says is that where you, where you have an electronic message sign as part of a larger sign, the electronic part can only take 50%. What they're here, what they're proposing is can be more than 50%, so they need a variance to that. So, this, at the end of the day, their electronic sign is like, is bigger than what's allowed under zoning.
Which basically is what they're showing in the picture here.
Correct, yes.
What's, what's this one here? That has like...
That's the existing, they're showing the dimensions of the existing sign.
And I know that's what they want to do, okay. And this is going to go all the way to the ground.
And I can also say, Vinnie worked with them to not need variance, so this is what they want. Like, there was a way that they could get, you know...
So, they were worked with, and this is what they came back with?
Yeah.
So, we're looking at timing change, animation, and overall percentage of electronics. Is that what we're looking at? Is that the...
Yes.
That's the variant.
Say what?
That's the three variant.
Yeah, so they're asking variances as far as timing, as to the proportional size of the two halves of the sign, actually, also to the height of the sign. However, in my mind, this is a pre-existing non-conforming sign, so I'm not, yeah, I'm not even sure they need a variance. And then the fourth one is the animation, flashing signs, that sort of thing.
I mean, the existing, are you going to call them columns? That's not changing, right?
Correct. I don't believe so.
I'm not concerned about the size. It's really just the two, the two things, update frequency and the, and the animation. The sign is, the size, you're just going to fill in the area that's there already, right? But... But. That's my take.
So if this sign looks like it comes all the way to the ground, what's going to happen when it rains and snows and some of it's covered up? They're not worried about that, or?
They're probably.
Okay, whatever.
Okay, so I think we're just going to stick with the animation and the timing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a problem, I will.
Do you need for us to make it official, or?
Yeah, I would need a vote directing my office to appear and oppose those two particular variances.
Okay, so we're. I don't want to get this confused with not having an opinion or remaining neutral and sending you. So should there be two motions here, or should it just be?
You can have.
If, let's put it this way, if I make this motion to send you, whoever doesn't necessarily agree with that says nay. Yes?
Yes.
Not necessarily, they're not going to vote?
Correct, yes, yes.
All right.
So the motion should be to authorize the township solicitor to appear and oppose the variance request as to the timing of the sign, you know, the message on the sign, and the sign having animation or flashing lights or change, that sort of aspect, that variance.
Well, you've stated the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Would someone like to?
Make the motion as stated by the solicitor.
Yes, make the motion as stated by the solicitor. I shall do so. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Hexter made the second. All of those in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone not in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, just because this is the second time this has come up in three of these topics. When we do send your firm to the township, we just pay our solicitor to do this? Like, it's, it's out of our budget?
Yes.
Okay. Jason, if you could look into why we charge them for residential zoning hearing permit, while we're at it? Then that extra money could go towards Peter's associate.
So you don't need us to delineate the sections of the zoning?
No.
You've got that.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the Springmount Road Sidewalk Project, GMB Construction Group's payment release.
I think that would be me. So GMB Construction Group has completed a portion of the work on the Springmount Road Sidewalk Project. They submitted an invoice, which was accompanied by supporting documents. And we are recommending consideration of payment of the contractor's invoice of $161,952.31 as payment number one for this work. We're further recommending that payment be contingent upon receipt of required payroll records. I'm missing records for one week, and they're working on getting those to me. So my recommendation would be to process that payment this evening, and the check would not be released to the contractor until the payroll records are provided to the satisfaction of the township engineer. Somebody did ask why my summary sheet didn't include the change order. The recommendation for payment was actually prepared before you addressed the change order publicly and approved that, so that will appear on the next summary sheet.
Okay. So the next time they want to come back and get payment for the rest of this, will that change order be included?
Yes, that will be included on the summary sheet.
So this, this whole, the addition is under this bid? Correct? The change order from last week?
The change order from last week.
Right. Is part of this project. It's not above and outside of the original bid?
It's, it's, it's in addition to the original bid.
That's what I mean.
The change order is, yes.
Yes, yes, so it's, it's going to have prevailing wage, payroll, the whole thing.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, great, that's all I needed to hear, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, the motion is to authorize release of funds for payment, application number one, in the amount of $161,952.31, and GMB Construction Corp., Inc., verified by value engineering memo and summary sheet dated April 22nd, 2025, for Lower Frederick Township's Springmount Road Sidewalk Project. Can I get a motion?
I'll so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Supervisor Sax makes the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Public Works request for traffic light detection system.
Our, our current detection line is buried in the road. Tommy has informed me that over the years, this has gotten damaged, mostly by the Pico gas line work. And currently still works, but not as well as it should. We have had this in our budget over the last couple of years. This will be mounted above ground, so any future roadwork wouldn't impact the sensor. This does control the, the traffic light. At times, there can be longer delays of coming off a Springmount Road, and it is budgeted to come out of our general fund and capital improvement plan. And this does include the installation of the detection system.
Any questions, any comments?
You said this was in our budget?
Yes.
For this year, okay. And this is the only quote we got? Is there other companies, or?
No, this is, I, I don't know how many, this is, traffic lights, there's not a huge. Oh, yeah, they are Co-Stars, so that's.
And I know you said it's above ground versus underground, but what is this?
This controls the, the light, when you pull up to the light, it controls how long the light stays red, or?
So it triggers it, so you get a green light from the side street.
And that light's ours to maintain?
The, the traffic light does belong to us.
That's fine.
We, we get to maintain all lights, even the end up light.
Okay.
That was actually a hot topic during the last couple of days. State roads.
Do these things come with any kind of, like, warranty? Or is there calibration that has to be done periodically, or? We don't know.
I'm not aware of any calibration on the video detection services. I don't see a warranty in their quote, but.
I, I don't know what these things cost, so I have nothing to compare it to. Did you see this was a Co-Stars?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Co-Stars.
There it is, okay.
And we're saying, Pico damaged it, though?
That's what Tommy's, I, I don't know if he can confirm that for sure, but I know they, they had a lot of work down there, and that, that's what he relayed to me.
I'm aware of repeated failures of the loop detection system, and that's really sort of an antiquated way of doing things today. Most, all new traffic signals are video detection, and, and most municipalities are converting over to it, because with the loop detectors, you're really more prone to them.
Yeah, I mean, if Pico was digging around there and damaged it, why are we asking them to pay for some of this damage?
Do you think they would? Do you think they would?
Not really.
Good, no, I know, I had a good point, though.
They don't want to pay for nothing.
No, I know, I know. Like I said, I have nothing to compare this to. I don't know if this is good, I don't know if this is bad.
Sorry?
It's Co-Stars pricing.
I mean, if it's a Co-Stars pricing, I don't think you're going to do better. At least that was always my understanding. I don't understand what that means. I mean, it is an.
You know, the staff can shop around. I, I don't think this is probably the only provider in the area who can give us these things, if you're not comfortable with the price.
It's not a matter of I'm not comfortable with it, I just don't know what they, like, apples and like, because, okay, so it's $5,098, you don't know if it has a warranty, you know? It's kind of like, well.
Can we, so maybe we should punt this, seeing as though this isn't like a got to have next week kind of thing, and maybe you could do the things that Noel mentioned?
Yeah.
Find out about, and what I brought up, the warranty, and get a comp on it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Make every nickel scream, give every bank a bump.
Although, my understanding, if it's Co-Stars, this is the best price.
I would, that was my understanding, too.
So the question is about a warrant?
To be honest, no, it isn't, actually.
No?
No. I've, I've had situations where we've been forced to take, we've negotiated a price. I stepped in and said, well, this is above the bidding limit, we're going to have to bid this out. Found out the, the supplier was a Co-Stars, and so we said, oh, we'll buy it via Co-Stars. Ended up with a higher price, and said, why can't we get the lower price? And they're, sorry, no, this is the Co-Stars price, this is what you get. That being said, you, under Co-Stars, we are allowed to negotiate with a supplier. We can't negotiate higher, but we can negotiate lower. So if we do shop around, and we do find someone with a lower price, but we want to go with this particular supplier for whatever reason, we can always go back to them and say, just like anyone else, hey, this guy over here is willing to sell up for 500 less, you know? So we certainly can do that.
Well, considering it's not an emergency, I think we can take the time to look into those things, and maybe have that on our next agenda for discussion. Okay, so we're going to table that for now, and hopefully have something to talk about with a little bit more information at our work session. So, next on our agenda is the sewer connection. Authorize EDUs for 10 Fourth Avenue and 568 Little Road.
Okay, we received an application to connect a property to the sanitary sewer system for 10 Fourth Avenue Road. We also received applications to connect 5, 6, and 8 Little Road per Section 123-3, building sewers and connections. Section A, no, no person shall uncover, shall connect with, shall make any opening into, or shall use, shall alter, or shall disturb in any manner any sewer or any part of the sewer system without first obtaining approval from the Board of Supervisors. So that's what's in front of you tonight. We are still working through with the application for the Little Road properties. So this is just kind of a check the box. It doesn't, it, it doesn't signify that those applications are ready to move forward, although I, although 10 Fourth Avenue will be going in shortly.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I mean, this is pretty standard. We're just giving them permission to connect. They still have to do all the normal stuff.
Agreed. Okay, so the motion before us this evening is to approve 10 Fourth Avenue and 568 Little Road to connect a public sewer, contingent upon all required permits being obtained by the property owners, and the tapping connection fees are paid. Can I get a motion?
I will abstain from it.
Okay, Supervisor Sax is abstaining from the vote.
I'll so move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Supervisor Bird makes the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the appointment of our new park and rec member.
Okay, so we received a, um, application from Janice Zimmerman on 4/1/2025. At the April 7th Park and Recreation Board meeting, a contest was given by the board for her appointment to one of the open positions. And this would be for a term ending 12/31/2026.
Is Janice with us, or?
No.
On Zoom? Oh, okay.
Would this fill your last vacancy?
Yeah, it's still.
One more, okay.
Okay. All right, well, this is an easy one. Okay, the motion is to appoint Janice Zimmerman to the Park and Rec Board for a term ending 12/31 of 2026. I will make that motion. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Supervisor Hexter makes the second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And last on our agenda this evening is the fire police request from Lansdale Borough and the Lower Providence Township.
So we received requests for fire police assistance from the Fairmont Fire Company of Lansdale and Lower Providence Township Police Department. For Lansdale Borough, it's our 34th Annual Under the Lights Car Show, scheduled for June 21st, between 2:00 PM and 11:00 PM. Lower Providence, it's actually two events. We got it, we received a fire, another request, actually, today, but since they were on the agenda, I added it to it. One is for Montgomery County of Heroes event on Saturday, May 17th, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And their other event would be the Lower Providence Fire Department Fair, which is Thursday, June 5th, through Saturday, 6, or June 14th.
Does any have anyone with questions or comments? I'm, I'm just curious, is there like a dearth of fire police? Or are fire, fire police like the best?
For all the events, it's a large turnout, so they're trying to make sure.
So they pull in from all over the place?
It's more or less mutually.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and fire police, it's been my experience, they tend to, they've been getting smaller, much like with the issues with the, the regular firefighters. So it's kind of one of those, there's, there's only so many go around. But as you said, it's, it's nice to have more hands on deck.
But these are big, big events, understood, okay. Okay, so the motion is to authorize the use of Lower Frederick Fire Company's fire police at the request of Fairmont Fire Company in Lansdale Borough for their June 21st event, and Lower Providence Township Police Department for the October 26th.
No, I, I have to, that was a correction.
Yeah, that's wrong.
So that, for their events on 5/17/2025, and Thursday, June 5th, to Saturday, June 14th.
Lansdale Borough's is when?
Lansdale Borough's is correct.
Okay, so the Lower Providence Township Police Department is for when?
Events on May 17th, 2025, and Thursday, June 5th, to Saturday, June 14th.
Okay, I will try this again. The motion is to authorize the use of Lower Frederick Fire Company fire police at the request of Fairmont Fire Company in Lansdale Borough for their June 21st event, and Lower Providence Township Police Department for their May 17th, 2025, and June 5th to June 14th, 2025 event. Can I get a motion?
Chuck Yizer will make the motion.
Supervisor Yizer makes the motion. I will make the second. All of those in favor, say aye. 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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, this is our public comment period. Do we have any public comment? Yes, Warren. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Warren Jacobs, Fulmer Road. Sorry, Bird, thanks for your question about the paving on Little Road. Question for Peter. Is there anything in our agreement with either of those developers that gives a deadline that they do that paving at a certain time after the completion of the project that they had to dig it up for?
There are deadlines, general deadlines, as to when they have to install all the public improvements, not just the repaving. But yeah, there's, there's those deadlines. There's not a specific deadline as to when the repaving has to take place.
So there's no control of that by us? It's just a matter of whenever they feel like doing the paving is when it'll get done?
As far as the agreement goes, yes.
For both of those roads, Route 29 and Little Road?
Yes.
Is PennDOT involved in that in any way? Do they have any kind of control over it?
Yes, those are actually under PennDOT HOP permits.
So do the PennDOT permits give any kind of deadlines or any kind of indication of when it's going to be done?
So there's a window within which they have to close a part, the, the permit closes and the work has to be done, or they have to get an extension granted. I will say that the contractor for the Farmview Development has been relatively responsive when they've been asked to make improvements to that Little Road. when they've been asked to make improvements to that Little Road pavement, and I will reach out and try and get a date from them that I can share with the public and with the board on exactly when that work will be done. And they just finished the utility work in that road, so I'm imagining it's not terribly far off. I would imagine they would want to get that smoothed out for the promotion of their development as well. So I'll ask them for a date, and I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom, Jason? No?
Doesn't appear to be.
Okay. Supervisor comments? Do we have any supervisor comments?
It's for Peter, the question. I've asked the other questions before, so. So when I was, became a supervisor, I put my hand on a Bible and took some oaths. Do I need to uphold the Constitution of the United States and, and Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I see no other comments. This meeting is adjourned.